I now call the February tw- uh, twel- February 12th, 2019 work session meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven o'clock. Would Council members, Schatz will lead us in the pledge, and afterwards I'll lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that have poured out so generously upon us. We're grateful for this building that we meet in. We're grateful for the citizens that are in our audience. We're grateful for those that are at home. We ask thee to bless us so we might have the opportunity to do their will, that we might be able to listen and to serve, do the things that would make our city grow and be prosperous and be beautiful, a wonderful place to live that it always has been. We ask for these many favors and blessings, and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would the city clerk please read our roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I would declare that we have a quorum pleasant, present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I was contacted by, um, one of the people at our Willow Creek, our new school, and they wanted to have a proclamation on random acts of kindness. And, uh, one of the things I said I wouldn't do if I ever got to be the mayor was proclamations. And before I even was seated, I was asked to do a proclamation. And it was kind of fun. Tonight I went down at around six o'clock and, and, um, at the school, they were having a parents' night, and they were eating pizza, and, uh, they were enjoying the, the facilities. And, uh, I got to meet all the teachers at the school, the principal, all the students. And, uh, it was really fun to shake their hands and to enjoy the, the atmosphere. They'd built a tree out of, uh, out of crepe paper, and it, it was really tree-looking. You ought to go look at it. It's in their lobby. And on that tree, they hung little green leaves, and, um, every child that had done a random act of kindness got to put a, a leaf on that tree. And they had four hundred and some leaves already on the tree. My wife received in the mail from one of her friends, Jean Piana, um, an act of kindness monster. And this act of kindness monster, you can pass around and send it to your friends with a plate of cookies, or whatever you want to do. And so I swiped that from my wife as I came down to, um, to encourage us all in this coming week that we might be able to do some random acts of kindness for those people around us, so that people know that we appreciate what they do. Whereas, the city of Riverton recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness performed without prompting or reason, and that these acts can positively impact the performer, the recipient, and the onlooker for good deeds. And whereas Wyoming's governor, Mark Gordon, has declared February 18th through February 22nd as Random Acts, as Random Acts of Kindness Week for Wyoming students, and challenged each school to, to perform 307 Acts of Kindness as part of the International Week of Kindness. And whereas, people of all ages can participate in random acts of kindness anytime, anyplace, and for any unselfish purpose, to spread goodwill. Excuse me. And whereas, to provide random acts of kindness and to reach out to one another, regardless of their social or economic status, education, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities, we extend the opportunity of grace and dignity and accept that that might not otherwise be offered. And now, wherefore I, Mayor Richard P. Gard of Riverton, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim February 18th through February 22nd, 2019, as Random Acts of Kindness Week in the city of Riverton, and ask the citizens in our community, and ask the citizens of our community to join with me in recognizing and performing random acts of kindness. In witnessing thereof, I hereunto set my hand the 12th day of February 2019. Now, let's all go out and do something kind. We have a community forestry assessment, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm pleased to have Mike Garvey here today. Mike was hired to the efforts of our Tree Board, many of whom are in the audience. He was able to assess a lot of the trees in town, and he's here to provide a report to you from his efforts. And again, I want to thank him for attending and also for the service he provided our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me boot this up. There's nothing worse than having a key and a password under these situations. Okay, can you hear me now? Is that okay? Okay. I'm Mike Garvey. I'm from Billings, Montana. I'm a registered consulting arborist. And, um, this is my fourth community in Wyoming over the last three years. This is totally funded by Wyoming State Forestry. And, um, so I've done Buffalo and Lander and Powell, and, um, here in Riverton this fall. And, um, I thank, you know, the mayor and council and staff are giving me some time to go over this really quickly. Um, for those of you who may not know the, the format, uh, th- these are just suggestions and recommendations and some observations about your tree community. And there's nothing binding at all. So there's no pressure that says, you know, there, if you read this document, um, this is a, um, a forty-page document. It reads like fifteen pages. There's a lot of photographs in it. I think it's well-written. Um, and I've just given a copy to your city administrator, and it's sometime in your busy schedule if you could go through that. And then, hopefully at some time, you could hook up with the Tree Board, Josh and the Tree Board, and, and maybe hash this over and, and think, you know, hey, there's some things that could work. There's some stuff that's just a bunch of baloney. We're not going to go that route. Um, but it's purely non-committal. And I've, uh, have, I can say this, that the last couple of years, I've gotten some good feedback from the last two communities, and some of the ideas that they picked up on, they, they felt that it helped them out. Um, so, um, I'll just go back to the, to the beginning. In 1906, you had some real smart people moving into this area, and they were already planting trees, even before there's any, uh, streets or anything like this. We already have some really nice cottonwood trees here. And I did some research, and a, a local historian got some great information from your museum, your historical museum. And I did not credit them in the photos here. They are credited in the written report. Um, but the start of your trees are really in the downtown area, and then also in, in your parks. And this goes back to 1909. Ten acres are donated. Um, you're able, city council buys one thousand eight to ten-foot trees for a hundred and fifty dollars. That's fifteen cents a tree. Couple of years later, you purchase three hundred more trees for a hundred and fifty dollars. And then, in the sixties through the seventies, um, Riverton is the first project in the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Project to actually use some matching HUD funds and even funding some more city parks. So you're really ahead of the curve in terms of your parks and trees. And I, it's hard to read up there, but I, I think this needs to be said, because this is the theme that I took for, um, the way that I see trees in your community, Mr. Dickinson. And he says, "Riverton patrons long have been proud of their parks. Individuals and civic groups have been involved from the start. Their contributions have been numerous and generous." And I think this is, um, the theme behind everything that I'm, I'm talking about tonight, and later on with your master plan update. What I'm talking about has a lot to do with that very subject matter. So, um, your trees in your parks, uh, actually, as in your, um, city park, or Fremont Park, your main park today. And, um, I, I just had a, I drove down here today. I walked around the park. I relaxed. It's a, it's a wonderful park. You have some trees that are starting to age out. And you really have some trees that are, are attacked by, um, a scale insect. You have at least four different species of trees that are, are pretty much dead. And so I counted about thirty trees in that park alone. They're going to need some attention in terms of their structure and, and dying out. Um, your trees on, on your residential boulevards, the slide on the, um, on the left, the arrows are pointing out, this is probably your first-generation trees, and, um, red arrow is pointing to some trees that are actually hacked. And this was kind of what we used to do for tree surgery way back when. This is really frowned upon now. It's why a lot of these trees probably died. You have some full trees on the left side of the photo, and then you actually have some new trees being planted way back in, in the fifties and sixties. And, and the slide next to it on the right is showing some of these wonderful trees in your neighborhoods, and also some new trees that are being planted as well. What I noticed mostly on your residential areas in terms of trees and planting spaces and planting issues, um, the slide on the right shows these wonderful, we used to have these wonderful big fat ten-foot boulevards. And this is great for planting trees. Anymore now, we have two- and three-foot wide boulevard strips that are not really good for planting trees. And so you have a lot of these, uh, first and second-generation trees that are already gone. And then the bottom slide on the left shows where a tree didn't make, and this is a really harsh environment. And I will say this, that there are some places where you just simply don't want to plant trees. You don't want to waste the, the time and the money if you can't get water, if you don't have enough soil volume. Um, slides on the right are showing some new trees that are being planted in the community. And, uh, there's a lot of staking of trees going on down here. Do you get wind down here? We get a lot of wind, and you have to stake trees. But one thing that I noticed, in particular on the, on the slide on the bottom, this wonderful, um, spring crab apple has been staked and surrounded, and yet it's already tipping over. And so there's probably some planting issues going on, depth of planting and so forth and so on. And, um, the trees like that that start falling over really don't have a long life expectancy. Either they, they start getting some other issues structurally and biologically. Uh, and in some of your new neighborhoods, there are no trees. And this is a nice neighborhood. When I look at this as an arborist, and I'm seeing, uh, some spaces here. Now, you have boulevards that the walkways are right next to the street, which is, is actually a good idea in a lot of ways. But in terms of all that nice grassy area there, um, that, to me, is really a good place to start planting some trees. You've got a lot of soil volume there. And so I'm thinking that maybe that somehow we're, when I say we, Riverton, uh, is not thinking about the value of trees like maybe they were back in 1906 and through the nineteen sixties, seventies. Your trail system, you have a wonderful trail system. And, um, Josh took me around one day. We're up and down the trail system. You're doing some really good things. You're planting a lot of different species of trees. Uh, I decided I'd just pick on this bristlecomb pine, Pinus aristata. That species, by the way, is the oldest known species on, on Earth. They have some trees down in Utah that I think are about five thousand years old. These are wonderful trees. You have a lot of fruit trees spaced well. Uh, they're watered. They're irrigated really, really well. So that is really a good thing that you're doing in, in, in the community. Um, the photo on the right just shows where the soil has kind of sunken down after it's been planted, and exposing those roots at the very top that dry out, that cause a lot of trees to, especially when they're young little trees like that. They dry out. They get stressed out. They get diseases, and they don't make it. So there's a little bit of some aftercare, some maintenance, um, that needs to be looked at a little bit more as you're plant, deciding to plant more trees. Your River Walk is awesome, too. I mean, that's, you just have a wonderful community. Uh, I was mentioning to Kyle earlier, and just met him a little bit, that I've got some really good friends in, um, old, old friends in Lander. And over the last forty years, I've just buzzed through Riverton, and I have not really stopped in town. And so when I spent two and a half days in October and, and got to know some of your community, this is an awesome place to live. I mean, it really is. Now, as far as trees goes on your River Rock Trail System, there's just a few items you might want to consider. I know some of the trees were donated. They were field dug, some nice big trees, some of these evergreens down at the bottom. You got a smoking deal on them. That's really fine. Um, the, if you can see this on the, the right slide bottom on those two pines, uh, there's a juniper and a pine, uh, there's a red, uh, circle. That shows what the actual digging, uh, ball was. And then a dotted yellow line. And this is where these balls should have been dug. They should have been twice as big. Um, that's on national standards. We're finding that if you're taking too small of a, of a dig, you're losing eighty percent of your roots. And these trees have enough energy for a year or two, and then they, then they have troubles and they die out. So, and just some best management practices on some of the tree species that you're putting in there. And then also, um, top photos are pointing out some hybrid poplar trees that are like the worst trees in the world. They're not the plains cottonwood. That is not the state tree of Wyoming. That's one of the best trees in the world. These are these hybrids that grow twenty feet a year, but they're disease, insect, mite, um, structural problems. They don't live very long. And these are really not the trees that you want in this area. Um, you'd probably want to go more with a native cottonwood, some willows, uh, some dogwood, some really native type of species that are, alder would be another one that would, um, be a good selection down there. And then just in terms of, of spruce trees, know that you'd probably want to limb those trees up sooner than later. That's what we're doing in parks anymore, just for safety concerns. So spruce do not look that well-limbed up. Pine do. You might want to lay off a little bit on your, on your spruce trees in that area. Trees in the commercial business district. Um, again, I really, really like your downtown area. I stopped in three restaurants. There's a place down there that has some of the best pies in the world. If you, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, it's awesome. I just, they, they had to kick me out of there. Um, I'd like to just tie this in a little bit with your master plan. And, um, again, I highlighted a few things here, um, uh, from your master plan. Enhance corridor and gateway appearance, and increase pedestrian comfort and safety, and then provide incentives for people to actually stay and shop here. And if you look at some of the supporting material that I've included on that disc, there is so much science out there. Kathy Wolf, University of Washington, Gary Johnson, University of Minnesota, that shows that trees, people are attracted to trees, and people will actually stay longer at, um, uh, businesses. They'll spend more money. And, and we don't even think about it. And so that's the thing that you might want to think, uh, as you're redoing your master plan, is actually ta-talk a little bit more about trees specifically. I was fortunate to get a, a slide here, um, when this was really, uh, done in 2004. And then this is this picture that I took, uh, just in the fall. So, um, there are some design flaws with the tree planting. And first of all, I have to say, again, this beautiful area, uh, all the hardscape, it's all, I mean, the garbage cans. At Billings, we don't have those like that. Those are really cool. And is, is the, um, the pavement, is that supposed to kind of represent the, the rivers? Is that, yeah, I got that. That is, that's really enticing. Here is the problem. A photo on the left, this is a honey locust tree. And you see this all over. And we like to attach these electrical outlets because we like to put Christmas tree lights on trees. And that looks really pretty. But what happens is, is that tree is getting bigger and bitter, bigger and bigger, whiter and whiter. It's actually growing into that, that outlet. And in this particular instance, that weeping that you're seeing there is actually a very serious disease, thyroinectria canker, a fungal disease that is actually a tree killer. And, um, so you have to start thinking of trees as alive and not so much as lamp posts and garbage cans and everything that aren't. And you see this, this is not in Riverton. This is in Billings, Montana. This is in New York City. It's all over the world. And, uh, it's really an issue, um, with your trees. And so the short end of it is, is that a lot of money is being wasted because there's a, a short lifespan for trees in your business district. Couple of photos here of, of some ash trees that haven't made it. And, uh, you want to stay away from green ash, uh, in particular with Emerald Ash Bore, uh, is a, is an insect, invasive insect, that has killed about twenty million trees, uh, in North America already. It's, and it is a tree that does not do well, uh, under sidewalk, um, restraints. Uh, honey locust is a much better tree. And so I just did a comparison. Top photo is one of those stumps that I showed earlier on those nice big white, uh, white boulevards. I counted the rings on that. That tree's at least, uh, fifty years old, maybe sixty years old before it was cut down. And this tree, um, that I just showed you downtown, that red circle around there is probably the size of the tree when it was first planted. And you look at those growth increments on that tree, and that looks like it was doing well, but it's, it's gone. It's already dead. And this is really, really expensive. Um, a tree like this, to plant it and to maintain it and take it out, you're probably, you know, about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a tree. Iron tree grates is a total waste of money. I'll bet you, if anyone you were around when this was first designed, one of the big-ticket items were these iron grates. No one, well, I can't say no one is planting them, but everyone's getting away from them. I just read an article, "The average life expectancy of trees and trees with grates is fifteen years." And this was designed fifteen years ago. Uh, they're never managed. You're supposed to cut away, uh, you know, the grate as it gets, as the tree gets bigger. No one ever does that. It's expensive. Uh, people don't think about it. And then it's a tripping hazard. And I can tell you this, the Montana Municipal Interlocal Agency, which ensures a lot of municipalities in Montana, did a presentation that I was at, that there are more liability and lawsuits and everything over sidewalk tripping, heaving, than there are from branches falling down. So this is something, if you redo your downtown area and more designs and everything, that you would look really hard at this, and I would recommend not going this way. There's a lot of different techniques and material, um, that can take care of these trees in these harsh, uh, environments. And that's also on that CD. So you have a lot of different land uses, and that's really good. And I guess the thought here is that one tree doesn't fit all. You see a lot of these communities that go to one tree. It's a cookie cutter type of approach. You have completely different, um, uh, you know, business and residential and your development and so forth. So don't get locked into, oh, we really love this one tree. It's really, really hardy. We'll plant them all over. And these two photos here, this reminds me of Billings about forty years ago. I've lived in Billings for forty-five years. And you have all these really nice wide open spaces. It's my understanding that Riverton is about, the city of Riverton's about ninety-five percent developed. And you have some county land and going on. But this will probably be developed one way or the other. Two points here is that if you go back in these areas here, that red arrow at the top is showing a, um, I believe that's a dug fur, that no one has taken care of. No one has done anything to that. These are the trees you need to look at in terms of planting throughout your community. The trees that can take care of themselves that are not, you know, high maintenance, take a whole lot of water. And then on some of the new business development, and I just posed the question, is the value of trees understood? And that's in relationship to the value that trees actually give in making the, your community more attractive, um, making it safer, slowing down traffic, drawing business, and, 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 you know, in increasing your commerce. And I know in the West, we don't like a lot of people telling government, telling us what to do. But I can tell you this, the difference between Bozeman, Wantana, and Billings in terms of, in Bozeman, if you've ever been to Bozeman lately, they call it Bozangelis now. It's just, they've ruined Bozeman. Um, but there are a lot, if anyone comes in and develops in Bozeman, they're going to be planting trees, and those trees are going to be specked outright. And it looks like a million dollars. And Bozeman is just going nuts. In Billings, there is nothing. And it's just a disaster. So, um, if developers come in and builders come in and say, oh, we can't plant these trees. It's too much. You can say, well, that's baloney. We have this information from Mike. We can, right here, that proves that trees actually add value to those pieces of property. So I would strongly suggest you look at that closely. Um, I've got some recommendations, and one of them is to hire a municipal arborist. And I know that costs money, and, and cities don't have money for parks and trees. I understand that. Um, but right here, three trees in town. What's the hazardous tree, or any of them hazardous? Do they need to be removed? What are the mitigation, uh, uh, options to keep those trees? A, um, an arborist could actually save you a ton of money in deciding this sort of stuff, and, uh, making sure that, uh, there's a priority action on trees that need to be taken care of. And there's certainly a priority action on trees that might look dangerous that are not. And I also, um, believe that I looked, you really don't have any tree ordinances as such. You have some stuff that's under nuisance. Trees shouldn't just be considered nuisances, although some trees can be extremely ugly. But, um, if you do create a, an ordinance, you actually protect your municipality, uh, in terms of liability. And then you, you stay away from this type of pruning. And to the untrained eye, that you just think, oh, that's just a really big green lollipop. But this is really bad pruning. The reason is, is that this is called limbing up. So all of the, that's a big tall tree. That's about a sixty-foot tall tree, uh, about maybe twenty About maybe twenty percent of the canopy is at the very top. What happens to those trees as winds come through? The tree starts going back and forth. It doesn't have any lower branches to actually balance itself out and stay upright. And they blow over, and they start to come up, and another guest gets it, and the whole tree falls over. And so this is a liability issue. And I could tell you right now, in the city of Billings, I'm actually representing the city of Billings for a law firm that is representing the city of Billings on a big old cottonwood. A branch fell out in one of our parks two years ago and injured a man. And it's a big lawsuit. And although maybe you have never been sued before, but it is something to really consider, even if you have really good insurance or not, with some of these big, larger trees that you have. So I do believe your budget is greatly underfunded just by some of the stuff that I got off of your website. The last four years, you're only averaging eight hundred and fourteen dollars in maintenance in your parks. Ideally, you would be spending about two dollars per resident. If you got eleven thousand people, you're looking at about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. And it seems to be, and this is based on some of the conversations I had with some people I talked to in town, tree board members and so forth, that your tree management is basically on reaction and not proactive management. And down the line, that proactive management, again, proves safety, saves funds and resources over time. In terms of a, of doing a tree inventory, this little tree right here cost you forty-nine dollars. You do a tree inventory. I did about six trees, inventoryed six trees, and found out that that little pine tree right there gives back yearly forty dollars in benefits. Energy, air qualities, stormwater, which is a really big deal. And the total value of these five trees alone are three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So trees are expensive. And this is a really big thing in our area in terms of what trees can do. You've had some flooding here. We have a lot of issues with that. But they save a lot of stormwater. And I won't go into that any farther than they could look into that. But trees are actually, in that way, is a public utility. It can give you an idea on the age of your forest. You don't want too many old trees. You don't want too many young ones. You don't want too many in the middle. And then you can actually prioritize, this is wild, out of these six trees, the actual leaf area in square feet. So that poplar at the top has almost two thousand square feet of leaf area, of shade. And that's a really important tree. And why that is important to you is that if you do an inventory, you can prioritize these important trees and gear that, save money, and improve your safety. So how many trees are in Riverton? Anyone have an idea how many trees are in your... There was, there's a lot of these little tags. At some point, there was a count, at least a numerical count, a long, long time ago. Well, here's the way that I see it. So you have seven city parks. You have a hundred and thirty-seven acres of park land. Yeah, you, your wastewater is at one point nine million gallons. You can handle up to four. That's awesome. You have a hundred and twenty miles of streets and fifteen miles of alleys. That's how you manage your community. The only way that you can manage your trees is to know what the resource is and what the structure is, what to do with them. So I would recommend to increase the funding and also promote trees on the city's webpage. I hate to compare towns. But Powell, Wyoming, does an awesome job in actually promoting their community on their webpage in terms of trees. Cheyenne, Wyoming, is also excellent on that. Talked about creating, at least thinking about a municipal city arborist that could actually follow, write a tree management program, enforce some community-based, and it has to be community-based, what's important here in your town, not, you know, what would work in Billings or anywhere else. Maybe conduct some public-oriented tree workshops to inform people on the right tree in the right place, where to plant trees, where not to plant them. And then maybe create a partnership with a public arboretum. They did it in Powell with the community, Wyoming Community College up the hill. And the big thing is just remember how Riverton began planting their trees. So in conclusion, only the residents and city officials can determine what direction the community wants to go in the future management of public trees in a safe, effective, and efficient manner. And this, I really hope that some part of this gets some consideration in terms of updating your management plan. And again, I want to thank the mayor, city council, everyone that is here. And mostly, thanks to the pioneers of Riverton for having the foresight to plant trees way back when. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle, do we have anybody on our tree board present?
Yes, Your Honor. Actually, I think we're on the same wavelength. It'd be great to recognize them. And if you don't mind, and we can indulge the council, if we could have them stand and be recognized. We do have Josh Schroyer here, who is the chairperson of your tree board. We have Barb Yates, who's one of our newest members. We have Jim Brodel and Tom Johnson, who have been long-term members of the tree board. Tom was a previous chairperson. And they do wonderful things, meet monthly. And with coordination, I think they've accomplished quite a few things. So maybe it's appropriate to give them a round of applause.
Mike, where did you go?
Oh, I'm right here.
Right there. Great presentation. And you're welcome to stay in Riverton anytime you want. We appreciate you.
Okay, thanks so much.
Your Honor, I did offer him a job. I don't know if he's going to take it, though.
Fabulous.
I'll work for pie.
We do have an opening for you, so if you want to come. Accept the resignation and declare a vacancy of Ward One. Councilmember, city administrators report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is in receipt of a letter of resignation from Councilman Sean Peterson in Ward One. Pursuant to our processes, it is appropriate for council to accept that resignation and to declare a vacancy, excuse me. It is the recommendation of staff that city begin soliciting applications immediately following this council meeting, which is denoted as the last day for Councilman Peterson. We would give electors until Thursday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at noon for applications. This would allow applications to be placed in the packet for the meeting commencing on Tuesday, Tuesday the fifth of March. If council would like to amend that schedule, we could do that. Or you could tell us to advertise for a certain amount of time, whether it be three weeks, and then we would put it on the next regularly scheduled council meeting. At this point, we recommend council accept the resignation and declare vacancies. Staff will take it from there. And we extend our heartfelt thanks to Councilman Peterson for the good work he has done for our community. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to accept Councilmember Sean Peterson's resignation and declare a vacancy in Ward One.
So moved, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. At this time, Sean, if you'll meet me down at the podium, the city has a gift for you.
Your Honor, could you get closer to the mic?
This is a watch that was presented to Sean from the city. We appreciate his efforts.
Thanks, Sean. I know I'm not supposed to say anything, but... Megan, when I first came on, she was, she was the one that kept me from going crazy, so.
Public work.
That's right. Public torch project. Tony, you mentioned to me before we started that you would like to move eleven in front of ten. Is that something you still want to do, or...
Sorry, Your Honor, let me get back.
It's a master plan meeting and putting adjournment in front of a master plan?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. I'm sorry, I was getting back to my main page. It was the thought of staff, after having put this together and thought about it for a little bit, it might be easier based on the way this is being done for council to adjourn and take part in the master planning process. That way, it's not so much from the dais, it's more on the ground and talking with people. So that would be the recommendation, is that maybe it would be better to adjourn and then work on the master plan.
Do we need a motion, or can we just do that?
Your Honor, I think at this point, you could just, a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Who is the second, Sean? We have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We're adjourned at seven thirty-eight. Now, we'll go back to ten. We have a master plan meeting this evening, and we'll turn the time over to our community development director for a report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have Barbara Cloth and Matthew Ashby with Ayers and Associates out of Cheyenne. They are the consultant that we've selected to perform the update for our master plan. With that, I'll probably let Matt take it away and introduce them.
Great. Thank you for the kind introduction. We are excited to be here in Riverton to kick off the master plan. And I'll give a brief overview of the process and project as to where we're at right now. And then we will move to the open house boards for some engagement and interaction, where we can hear from you all a little bit more about your vision for the future. So we did kick off the project in December and had a kickoff workshop with some staff and a few of the members of the council and planning commission, just to get a better sense of where the project needed to go and to kind of help us plan out the overall process. Since that time, we have created a 101 sheet with some background information, launched information on the website, the city's website, where folks can gather more information about the process, as well as having launched a community survey. So we would encourage folks who may hear the recording of this or folks in the audience to encourage their friends and neighbors to participate in the survey. To date, we've received about a hundred and forty responses to the survey, which is a pretty good response. Would always love to have more. So please do encourage your friends and neighbors to provide their feedback. Thus far, with the survey, the top issues are economic development, which I don't think is a surprise to anyone. Folks are comfortable with the idea of anticipating some additional growth. They don't want to necessarily see things change radically from how you've grown in the past. And investment in the community and a focus on quality are some of the key issues that have come up within the survey so far. So today's meeting is really about exploring the values and vision that the community has for itself. We want to find out a little bit more the key things that people here in Riverton care about most and where they would like to see the community go in the future. And we'll be really focusing on some key issues of land use, economic development, transportation, parks, community design, as well as tribal partnerships. And I think one of the key things that we were requested to do was to provide a more strategic approach to the master plan for the community. And so what that means to us is that while we will be including a comprehensive review of your policies and direction and guidance for the future, we also want to dig into a couple of key elements and give you some idea of how to implement those strategies so that you have a tool that you can put into use immediately for the community. So with that, we do have a worksheet that we'll be asking folks to help fill out and provide us with some written feedback. This item is also going to be available for members of the community who couldn't make it tonight. If they want to get ahold of one of these, fill it out and return it to Eric. We will incorporate those comments into the planning process. So we're in our second stage of the process, which is the exploration phase. March will kick off our visioning phase, which will start to formalize the master plan and looking at the April timeframe in order to have a plan to you prior to your budget deliberations mid-year. So that's generally the timeline for the process. But we encourage you to visit the sign-in table next to the doors, provide us with contact information for the audience as well, so that we can reach out to you next time we do have a meeting and let you know via email of the next step in this process. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point, but would invite you to work your way through the boards behind us and provide us with your vision for the future.
Thank you. Are we going to lose our television audience when we switch back? Or should we, should we have him stay at that mic?
I'm not absolutely sure, Your Honor. I'd have to check. Likely, we would be able to keep our television audience on, I believe. We can use the mic right over here.
Okay. So why don't we give you that mic? So we can, we do have it under live feed, so the citizens of Riverton can see you. So I'd at least like to keep your voice for them if they want to continue to listen.
Okay.
So if you would do that for us, and then we'll turn around and meet you in back, okay?
So Mayor, it is more of an open house structure, less of a formal presentation from us to you all. It's more of a one-on-one engagements with the consultant and the boards for you to write down some of your ideas and things like that. So I'm not sure...
Well, maybe we should encourage that television audience that they're done for this evening. And if they have further interest, they could pick up information from City Hall and fill that out and get it back to us.
That would be ideal.
Your Honor, if I may, you might, we might also encourage them to look into filling out the survey that's been done. We know we've got some good responses, but we could always use more. And if individuals were interested or wanted more information, they can always call our community development department, myself, or any of the other staff. And we can get them lined up with what they need and make sure that their comments are incorporated.
Maybe we could give Eric a chance to tell him how to get to that site? Where we go?
Absolutely. That's a great idea, Your Honor. They can absolutely visit www.rivertonwy.gov and follow the master plan, the Riverton master plan link. That will take them to a page with not only the survey, we also have the public engagement strategy, as well as the Project 101 form. We also have a video that Ayers was absolutely kind enough to put together for the master planning process as well. It's quite informative and provides some essential dates for the plan.
I've looked at that website, and it is well done. And it's easy to use. And I would encourage all of the citizens to go to that and put in their information, so we get good results back. Thank you. We stand adjourned.